I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Dorothy, if we could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Day.
Present.
Commissioner Camden.
Here.
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
And audience introductions, I guess we will start right here and we'll work back and then we'll catch the planning.
Okay.
Marcy Gray.
Roger Gray.
Ken.
Olivia Johnson.
The Bell.
Vic.
Okay, Barnes.
Jenny Hobbie.
Mary Dowler.
Carol.
Carol Reiner.
Okay, and we also have Dorothy Carston over here manning the the computer and we have Jordan Benson. And if anybody goes to speak here, I will have you identify yourselves and we will do the same with anyone that is online as well.
County Attorney Clint Smith is present.
Okay, sorry about that Clint, we didn't catch you. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
How are we doing?
I'm hanging in there.
All right. That's good. And then for those online as well, if you go to speak, we'll have you identify yourself as well, so. The one item that we have on our agenda today is this public hearing for the Custer County amended zoning resolution. And I believe I will. Do you have something you would like to say about it or bring to us in on it? Or do you want us to just go through?
I sent out a note and the ones that are on the desk is the updated ones. If you looked at the density, the word combined was behind it, so that's removed. And then also I had two number seven and we, I did not add the fire escape plan. So the ones that are out on the desk are the current ones.
Are passed out.
Yes.
Okay. I think everybody in the audience here have a copy of that. Okay. So the pages that everyone has is where the amendments have been made to these. We'll go to the first one. Should be on what you're seeing as page thirty-three. And it will be point number twelve. And that will now be the bottom half of that will struck out. Which stated at the public hearing, if any action by the PC fails to receive the required majority vote, the action shall be considered denied. That has been removed. The remaining part is all actions by the PC require the majority vote of the members of the PC. You have any comments or anything on that particular item?
Yeah. Yeah. Twelve that I crossed or like it's barely worked out, but it's not really worked out. I'm just finally learning my.
Does that mean there's a period after eleven?
No, it's number twelve. Twelve shouldn't, we're just writing out the.
The eleven has a colon, so semicolon.
No.
So. So.
They all do.
They all do, so they're all carrying through, right?
Uh huh.
Okay, that makes sense.
It would be within the PC.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
So number twelve after PC will be a semicolon. Okay, the next page with items on it will be page number thirty-seven.
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 Oh yeah, sorry, I missed that. Sorry.
And the only change on that one will be under H-one. And on that first line, it says appeals from decisions of the Planning and Zoning Office. And then it was added in, NBOCC must be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Office by any person denied a variance agreed by an inability to obtain a zoning permit or by a decision of any administrative official and et cetera. The only change to that is that NBOCC was added into that line. Anything on that? Okay, now we are on page seventy. And it's called under nine point ten. At the top of the page is our first. In that description, it says a short-term rental STR permit is required prior to renting or leasing all or a portion of any single-family dwelling for less than thirty days is what was that. There was a change made there. The previous version said for thirty days or more, I believe. So that was changed to less than thirty days.
Thirty days or less.
Or less, kind of less, yeah.
The previous forty days or less.
So we did say for thirty days or less, we just mixed it up because we can do that, less than thirty days.
Kind of clarifies it, makes it a little easier to understand, little read, more readable. Then if you drop down on that same page to section E.
A.
Hmm?
Where?
To E. Are you still on seventy? No, you're still on seventy.
Oh.
Many subdivisions in Custer County have protective covenants or restrictive covenants that were adopted at the time the subdivisions were created. The county does not enforce these covenants. They are not part of this zoning resolution. And then we have added C-section eight introduction. So basically that just refers you back to section eight and that brings more clarification to that statement. Any comments on that? Okay, page seventy-one. We're under nine, ten, three. A, four. And that is the STR does not cause significant impacts beyond the property's boundary. And then we have added in C-section nine point seven B. The good neighbor policy is included in your application and shall be posted in your house rules. Anything on that? Number five is a new addition. And it states adjoining neighbors' opinion shall be taken into consideration in the planning commission decision. Any comments on that?
Other than thank you.
All right. Drop down to section B. Number one. A property owner cannot submit an application before a structure is completed. A zoning permit is closed and property taxes are current. That is a new addition. Any comments?
I would have a question, see if I may.
You may.
Is there language in the zoning resolution that deals with what closing a zoning permit is?
Yes, there's a whole section on it.
Anything else, sir? Number two. Fire evacuation maps indicating routes from the residence and from the property must be conspicuously displayed in the STR dwelling. That is a new addition. Any comments? Number three. A reflective address marker must be displayed at the driveway entrance. That is a new addition. Any comments, questions? Okay, our next change will be in B, number six. Each owner of an STR property shall designate a responsible agent. The owner may designate himself, herself as a responsible agent. The name and telephone number of the designated responsible agent shall be conspicuously posted within the STR dwelling. The responsible agent must be, and this is the the change. So the responsible agent must be physically present in Custer County for the duration of each STR rental period and must be available at all times to answer calls and address problems associated with the STR. Any comments?
Question?
Yes, sir.
If this, if these amendments to the zoning resolution are approved, are existing short-term rentals, I hate to use the word, but grandfathered in?
Yes, sir.
So these changes will not apply to any existing STRs? Thank you.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Does that just apply for? Does that grandfathering just apply for the current year? Under renewed, they are also under, you know, the grandfathered regulations?
All the existing STRs we have, followed by the rules that were applied when they got their original application.
As our original.
And they are, you know, apply as well.
So they don't have to abide by these changes on renewal?
That's good clarification, thank you. Anything else? Next page, page seventy-two. Number nine. An STR permit in good standing must be renewed annually by January thirty-one with a renewal fee per the county's current fee schedule as an administrative action by the Custer County Planning and Zoning Office. The change to that was by January thirty-one. Did it only say annually before that?
It only said annually before and it's just, there's too much to keep track of, so let's say that you have an existing STR and your fees due this year in October. Then when it rolls around, you will pay January thirty-first, you will prorate it to cover it, so everyone will be on the same A schedule. And it really makes it easier for the office plus the applicant because now we have the applicants calling and saying, what's my STR due? So it's going to get everyone back on track.
Makes it an easy answer. You don't have to look it up if they're all the same day.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, next item will be number ten. Reapplication for an STR permit for a property cannot be like made less than one year after denial of the original STR application by the BOCC. Yes.
I have a question about this and it's for Clint. If you're denying a short-term rental, if the planning commission recommends a denial of a short-term rental, then it'll go to the county commissioners, their recommendation. If the board of county commissioners also agree with the denial, I still have thirty days as an STR owner to appeal that decision and by law, that's my right. So this is kind of needs to be reworked because if the BZA who looks at the decisions of denial, which we just read before, says, oh no, they can have an application. I think that we need to add on to this statement, and it just came to me this morning, or I would have clarified this earlier with the planning commission. I think we need to add on, reapplication for the STR permit for a property cannot be made less than one year after denial of the original STR application by the VOC unless they get approval on appeal.
Would that not make it a moot point if they got it?
But I think that was the way we're saying it, it's just kind of dry. Read it again because it says reapplication for an STR permit for a property cannot be made less than one year after denial of the original STR application by the BOCC, period. Well, that's telling me that I'm done.
You don't have an appeal, that's right.
And so we need to add unless you have approval through.
Right. Maybe it's just a simple.
They have to process.
Denied by.
No, because we don't want to jump to that conclusion. I think all we need to do after the period is say unless you receive approval through your appeal.
That's what I've written down. Unless the.
You don't have to go to the BZA, you can jump to.
That's why it's a norm.
So it's an appeal, so just leave it.
That that process is defined, all I'm saying is if you put it for BZA.
Clint, have you, did you hear all that?
I did.
Uh. Could you speak to that, sir?
Um. I think it's just. I don't have all this paperwork in front of me, but it's sort of implied that if the BOCC votes to deny an application, that's the end of it, but if there's an appeal, that just that's a separate thing that can reopen it again. So I, I don't know if there needs to be extra language to clarify that, but if there is a successful appeal, then everything that's happened before that goes out the window and the applicant can, is entitled to get the permit. I'm not sure, seems like we're kind of nitpicking this.
If I may too, I guess I guess I can, I can say I can. I was thinking because if the BZA then overturns that action by the BOCC, it's not a reapplication, it is an approval by the BZA of the original application.
If they deny it.
So then they would, they would not have a need to reapply.
But I also think. May I speak?
Yes, you may. I was directing that to you, so.
But I also think that we have spent time clarifying other things in this document. Then that would not be something that, I think that would be something that I would like to see. And I'm surprised that Clint disagrees with me.
I'm sorry, Jack, I'm out of practice. I do agree with you.
She smiled real big when she said that, Clint.
So then to clarify that, then if it's denied by the BZA, then the original denial by the OCC starts the year clock or not?
No. It's denied by BZA, you still have the ability to go up to district court.
So if that's approved there, then when does the, or denied there, when's the one-year clock start? VOC originally gets approved or?
It would start when they got approval from either BZA or.
Talking denied. If it is denied at any level of level, when the year clock starts? At the VOC's initial ruling or the district court?
It doesn't start until you get an approval, so if you.
No.
Was it denied, is that what you mean?
If the BCC denies it, you have thirty, you have a year.
Thirty days.
No, a year to reapply if they accept. If they were, if they, if they decide to appeal that and the next level of can deny it. And they let it go there, then when's the, the year clock start? And or it could go to the district level in the year and it could be denied there too. Denied for every step, when's the original year start?
Reapplication.
Reapplication.
Oh, the original reapplication would start with the first denied?
Okay, that's.
That's a BOCC level.
VOC level, so if you get denied, they got a year. They're not, in fact, they're not wasting time trying to.
Mr. Flower.
Thank you, sir. I agree with Jack's assessment about adding that statement on the end of it. But then to Commissioner Camden's point, which I think is very valid. An appeal process maybe could last six months, three months, who knows? My thought is that the time clock on the one-year waiting period should begin after the final denial hearing. That could end up in district court, it could get denied. That might be six months after the board of county commissioners voted to deny it. I would think it should be, the clock should start when the final denial of the application is heard, at whatever level that is, just my opinion.
Question?
Yeah.
How long does it take to get one of these cases to get poured? I mean, if there's, if it's backed up, which it is, your one-year denial period might expire before you get a court decision.
Yeah.
So to me, that's why it ought to be, at any time, it could be, you drop or whatever, so they probably shouldn't get back. And that, and they can't, they can't, they're not building, they're not building.
So all we gotta do is say reapplication for the STR permit for a property cannot be made less than one year after their original denial. And.
By the.
VOC. Do not, but all we have to do is the word after, insert original, correct?
It's in there.
No.
It, what I am reading, let me reread, let me reread what we are discussing here. Number ten, reapplication for an STR permit for a property cannot be made less than one year after denial of the original STR application by the VOC.
Okay, so then, what did you want to add, Clint? A line that says unless applicant applies and gets permission from, kind of feel, approval from appeal. And you're not, we're just.
That's right.
Vic?
Mark, I'm just gonna say after denial of the original STR application by the BZA, VOC, and/or the BZA, and/or district court. That's what we're talking about.
Yeah. Okay, so go back to the original thing, get about that initially. You're not being able to deal all this time, so you need to, like, not to go forward and takes a year to reapply. Or if you're trying to reapply and it keeps getting denied, so what? Because you're not building anyway and the original requirement was wait a year. So that takes more than a year. They quit after they realize it's already a year, why do I want to pursue it any further? So I think you should just leave.
So we're just getting original VOCs.
Clint, did. Uh. Do you feel that there should be something added into that, at the end of that?
I'm, excuse me, I'm having trouble hearing all the conversation, but as a legal matter, when the VOC makes its denial, if that's the decision, the appellate process to the BZA and possibly to district court, whatever the outcome of that is, is going to revert back to the date the VOC made its decision to deny. If, if that's overruled, then the application is approved as of that date. If it's upheld, if the denial is upheld on appeal, then the denial is back retroactive, back to the date that it was originally done. I don't know if that adds anything here, but there's not going to be another denial. All the BZA or the district court would be doing is deciding whether or not the action of the VOC on a particular date was correct. If it's overturned, it goes back to that date. If it's upheld, it goes back to that date.
Thank you, sir. And I'm going to throw my question back out again. If it's, if it's overturned by the BZA or by district court, then there will be no reapplication because at that point they're approved. That's, that's what my point is, is do we, we don't need to have a stipulation for reapplication if it ultimately becomes approved? Is that correct?
Okay, you win.
Okay. And I apologize, I've been looking at the room. Do we have anything? Anybody here in the room or online that have any comments on this as well?
Yeah, real quickly, in my reading, that one-year clause, it does a date, ends up being effectively two years. Because, because you have this application period, you submitted, three days later, you say, oh, we deny it. Now a whole round of years gone, and then you have to have a whole year. You, you add another year to that, so somewhere between, we want to do years. And so that seems like a bad rounding.
And did you identify yourself? Thanks, Charlie. Just so we make sure we get it down. So.
I watch children on the train.
I'm very bad myself.
It may be one of this, it may be one or two years, but there was a reason it was denied. Now, if you're denied, two months later, you're reapplying, that's, that's ridiculous. That's not a way it is now. That one-year clause is, it was denied for a reason. That one year process, it was denied for a reason. The one years of process allow things to change. People that allows time to go about for changes to happen.
Well, it reminds me of playing, I'm not late, and I don't remember how much it was, a hundred dollars to get out of jail? But this is a hundred dollars, or, or up to one ninety-nine, when you landed in jail. That's the way, okay, so if, if you're saying, yeah, and the wait, that wait period is, is a way to penalize. Then you've got a three-year, or you've got a, I don't know, I just call it kind of a rounding issue, because. You, you can't time it such that you can't avoid very close to a two-year penalty.
It's the original denial heard on some date, can't reapply no matter what you're doing, to try to appeal it. If, even if it's a supported, like it feels, you still have that one year.
So, at the time of denial, and so you, there's not a two-year process, or you've got your application in. It takes, what, ninety days? So three months to get there, by the time it probably reaches us. And then you, if we deny it, you have. One year from that time to wait before, so, so you're one year out from the time of denial. Which could make it a year and three months. And I would say it's probably not a penal, it's not penalizing, but it's, it's. I don't know that.
These applications are a year in the process, you're just saying, if it was denied on January fifteenth. Then.
Your application.
A year from January fifteenth. Then I didn't.
I think you were probably going back to where they're, they default to January thirty-one for, for the annual renewal. But if you don't have one, there's nothing to renew at that time, so you can still apply throughout the year.
Okay, so this wouldn't apply to new ones?
A denial is for a new S T R application.
Somebody catching a chance.
No, good question. Anything else on this one? Mr. Flora.
Not on this one, sir, but I'd like to go back if I may.
Yes.
Uh, we had a comment from somebody online. Back to page seventy-one, if I may, sir, I would read that. My opinion is, we would treat that as part of the public comment, but fair enough.
Yes, would you like to read that out?
Darla Schalles. Sent a message that said in relationship to nine, ten, three, B two. On page seventy-one, perhaps in addition to the fire evacuation maps. Information requiring guests to check on the current fire restrictions when staying here. Should be posted in every S T R as well.
Agree that that's also in their, their walking back, so they should be aware of that.
They have to give, uh, emergency phone numbers, and one of the things that they're walking back, it says, please check on the fire status. And then most of the ones that we actually have had. They said that they tell their guests, fire is running, there's a fire ban.
Yeah, that fire ban certainly can change within a day or so, and how that. A renter at an S T R gets that information, probably as incumbent upon them as anyone else in the community.
Now, any tourists up there can't burst it out.
And. And if it was. That is fire related, but I think number two specifically addresses the evacuation map for the residence itself. Is that not correct? So, uh, as well. To your point, and we went from a stage one to a stage two and back to nothing within a week and a half timeframe, so. Thank you for the moisture. Okay. I guess I would ask Darla. Did that address your concern, Darla?
Um, yes, to some extent, it did, um, I just. Would like to make sure that those who come and stay in short-term rentals are, that it is. You know, made known to them that they need to be aware of the current. Fire restrictions and adhere to them. Um, perhaps, you know, I think as many ways and as many layers as we can. Add that into short-term rentals, or even those mobile signs at the entrance to the towns. Um, just stating what the stage is. And then have literature perhaps at the welcome center and other businesses, so that they understand. Exactly what the rules are concerning the stage that. We are in when they are visiting, people are coming from a lot of different places and are completely unaware of. What a stage two means, or how many activities are restricted by any given stage, so I just want to make sure that. With the influx of visitors, uh, from other places, that, uh, we protect our environment. By making sure that they are informed.
Thank you, and I would comment on that too, that, that, yeah, I, I agree, and it needs to be. As well publicized as possible, and not just for the S T Rs, but for. Uh, everyone coming into our county, because. Ultimately, the S T Rs are just a small portion of that. So, uh, the more we can make people aware, uh, the better for all people concerned, thank you. Okay, we are back on number seventy, page seventy-two. Yes. Uh, under E. Four. Uh, and that is states make a recommendation to the B O C C, and then the change is. To approve or not approve the application, including pertinent findings supporting the recommended action. And the change is to approve or not approve the application. And section E is in regards to what the P C shall do, the planning commission. Uh, is making a recommendation to the B O C C to approve or not approve. Any questions or comments on that? Next page would be page number seventy-three. Under nine, ten, six, B. Uh, this is the, an add-in, and this is under violations and penalties. An owner of a property operating as an S T R without an S T, uh, excuse me, without. An approved S T R permit may be issued a cease and desist or. Desist order, C section twelve point six. Any questions on that one? Go ahead, sir. Oh, I had my head down, my apologies.
My question is, maybe, I mean, shouldn't that be a shelving?
Not necessarily, a lot of times, uh. They will be reached out to by the planning and zoning office, and that will. The situation will be rectified at that point. And without actually having to go to the further process of order, of issuing a cease and desist order.
Well, I only comment on that, I think it's weak. It's kind of like. It just kind of, it's weak, I mean, if they, if they're operating an S T R without approval, with their operating one without approval, S T R permit. There. Should be doing that.
Do you like to speak to that?
Sure.
Through, through that one, actually, on a third wall, sorry.
If we get a complaint. Uh, in the office that someone is operating an S T R, we have five days to. Uh, act on that complaint and make sure that what they're saying is what is true. Because, uh, a lot of times it's family or friends. And then I tell them that they must close down immediately, so if they don't close down immediately. Then we would have to go through the cease and desist process, which is the attorney, and plus usually I have to call the sheriff's department. And have them go with me to cease and desist the structure, so that's how come we try it the simple way first. Shouldn't there be something in there that they have five days after complaint or something, because that can really stretch? Yes, in the body of it, it's underneath the planning and zoning rules. It's how you handle a complaint.
Anything else? Okay, let's turn over to now to page seventy-four. And same section. Subsection E. An S T R applicant not approved by the B O C C may appeal to the B Z A. And then C section four point three H. So that puts specific language in there, letting them know that they are allowed to go through the appeal process. Any questions?
I just noticed something. I'm Roger Brady, and. An S T R applicant, should that be application?
Yes.
That's what you said.
Yes, don't take Mary's number. So then it would be maybe. An S T R application. Not approved by the B O C C may be appealed to.
Okay, so what I have here now is. An S T R application not approved by the B O C C may be appealed. I forgot my E D on there, to the B Z A.
B O C may be appealed, L A D.
Yes, I added my E D. Okay. Next item that has a change is nine point ten point seven. Stating S T R density. The number of S T Rs operating in each zone in the county will be determined at the first of each year. Increases in the number of S T Rs during that year should not exceed one in each of zones one and two. And three in zones three and four. Applications that would cause limits to be exceeded for the year would be deferred to the following year. And be considered in the order in which the applications were received. Yes, sir.
I have a comment. They will be determined at the first of each year, I think that should say, they will be determined after. January first. January thirty-first, right, because somebody might not be doing their application, so you need to.
That's a good point. So.
Determine after. January thirty-first.
You want to look at it on there when it's going to be turned by? That means we can turn, uh, September, we go along, so. I mean, by February twenty-eighty?
No, I think that a lot of things kick into place. Or for the zoning office in the county commission, the first month, so it's just part of the calendar being set. Elections and stuff, so I think it would be part of their packet, there's a lot of things that can get to place. And I think that, uh, with the numbers, and I'll read the numbers that we have now. Just so that everybody's on the same page, I think with the numbers, you're not going to see anything already exceed the density.
Well, you're right, uh, there's certain things that will be considered after the first of each year, like the cost of trash, the. Rates, uh, you know, a lot of things that we do that are normal processes that you all have in the zoning. This would be one of the. Look at the mission.
Correct. But you have to wait a certain time, just like with elections and setting the calendar and.
That's your job, you get to do it on those days.
Correct. Uh-huh, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think when we're talking about the density, I think that it would be. Proactive to get it out of the door of what we're doing right at this moment. So, uh, right now. If we combine zone one and zone two. And they could have one more in each of those zones right now. So, right as we stand today with all the applicants, zone one has four. So we can have five total for this year. So we can have one more, zone two, we have ten in, and we can have eleven. So we get one more in zone two. Okay, so, the way the density works, zone one and two can only have one each year. So zone one is the mountains, and zone two is the valley floor. No, just the opposite, forget what I just said. Okay, so now. Uh, we're gonna allow. Zones three and four to have three more each year, so zone three has only two short-term rentals as of now. So we can have five more. Okay, zone four. Five total, we can have three more, sorry. Zone four, we have twenty-five in, so we can have three more, and we should make it up to twenty-eight.
Sir.
Back to a point brought up by the planning commission. Would it make sense instead of saying after Ju, January thirty-first, to insert the words. In February? And that gives the planning and zoning office a timeframe. Because if we say after Ju, January thirty-first. By whatever reason. That number could be determined in July. Uh, exactly, that's what I'm bringing up, that we have more of a constrained timeframe, that those numbers need to be reported.
So instead of saying after January thirty-first, uh, county will determine in February.
That's what I'm suggesting, just so we have a beginning and an end to that time period, that's all.
Yeah, I don't think there's any harm in changing that.
What was that, Charlie?
I don't think there's any harm in just defining it as February, that will be determined in February. And anybody who knows.
What I consider is Jackie's retirement August, we've got a new individual there. Who's gonna have a term, so we'll try to figure out what fix going on. Cause they're not from walking and everything figured out, so we need a time.
Will help them all.
I understand that Jackie will have them up to speed and running. Like the oil machine.
This is one little piece of a very good project. So I agree, so this is what I put. The number of S T Rs operating in each zone in the county will be determined after January first.
Thirty first.
After January thirty-first, the B O C C will determine in February. Just we will be determined in February.
That's across the same year.
Of each year.
Yeah.
You have such a old view on this.
Well, because five years now will be reading.
Five years from now, it's good. The number S T Rs operating in each zone in the county will be determined after January thirty-first.
No. Strike that out of your mind.
Of each year.
Of each year.
I got that.
So each year is is in there already, so. Uh the only thing that we do is scratch at the first of or at the first and insert in February.
Wait. I scratched that.
I did too.
Come on over, it's all the way I was supposed to say. Sure. No, if I can.
So I will read what I have down and everybody tell me if they're good with that.
I don't know.
I don't. The number of S T Rs operating in each zone in the county will be determined in February of each year.
That's right.
Period, period. And the rest of that. At this time remains the same as what your changes are.
It's a process.
Everybody good with that? So if you would take then and turn over to page one oh seven. And for those of you with a hard copy in front of you, that's the next page. At the bottom of said page. Under twelve point seven penalties. We have, there are potential civil penalties for violation of any provision of this zoning resolution. Said penalties are set forth in section thirty dash twenty-eight dash one twenty-four point five of the Colorado revised statutes.
Okay, so this section was done by our county attorney. So we deleted a bunch that they passed through the legislature and we can't actually. Is it put him in jail?
The legislature changed the law effective in March. Um there are still criminal penalties and civil penalties. And the previous zoning resolution copied that language word for word. Uh my idea was, because they changed some of the provisions about. How the criminal penalties were going to be enforced since we've never. Used the criminal penalties to enforce the zoning resolution. I thought the easiest thing to do was just eliminate that and use the civil. Uh penalties remedies only, so that's what this is all about.
Thank you, sir. Anything else on this one then?
That's it.
Okay, so we have page one oh eight with nothing on it.
May I ask a question?
You may.
So yesterday I sent out a. Email to the county commissioner stating that um if this is approved today. It's the last to go through the process of having a resolution signed, I got it ready. And uh we'll have to do that in the next board meeting, then the moratorium would go off on the sixteenth. And then by that time, uh the planning commission will redo the S T R application. To reflect the changes that were made, that's going to be required in the application. And then uh we can clean up this and get that booked then, so the moratorium will go off.
June sixteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Okay, I move that we accept the changes as presented and amended to this meeting.
I want to vote in, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh with respect, Commissioner Kanda, I am concerned that. We will be out of order if we vote on this today, it was not an agenda item.
The way she described it, it sounded like we needed to approve these actions so it could be presented in a resolution.
Right, I understand that.
I'm gonna move that next step.
My opinion is that this needs to be on the agenda. This is a public hearing, it's.
I thought it was.
It really wasn't posted as an official B O C C meeting, although I think we all understand that it is.
I thought it was.
Yeah, so it wasn't on the agenda today, so with respect, sir, I think we better put this on. May thirty-first agenda and deal with the resolution at the same time.
If I may interject real quick and then. My intentions were. To go through this today and make sure we had everything together and we were all in agreement on it. And then on the. It would be. A nonofficial approval and it will be on our agenda for the. Month in the meeting with a resolution for us to approve of that.
My only concern was, we're three commissioners and we're and we're in a agreement that's making a decision, so I thought that this was. It's a hearing and I thought this was a formal uh need therefore, so if it plants good with that, I'm good. So we are in effect making decisions.
Uh your opinion on all this, Clint?
Today was just the mandatory public hearing or public input. You should not be voting on it today, you do need to put it on as an agenda item for another day.
Thank you, sir.
I agree with Tom.
Just a general comment and that's that um I'm gonna make a suggestion that will make this a little bit longer lasting and that's that. And it's to accomplish some things in substance, but not in the exact form that you have here. Because a lot of what this relies on is old fashioned paper and stuff that one else cannot read. So uh and I'm sorry, but so for example, I'm using an app where I can have for use of a hot tub. That they have to sign off on every single paragraph. If they're gonna use the hot tub before they get a code to get into the hot tub. So there's there's technologies out there and it's become the more and more prevalent. And so all I'm asking for is maybe like work with Jackie for a sentence that says. If there was a way to accomplish this thing, then more effectively using technology or something else as in the in the discretion of the local office. That it will meet that requirement as opposed, because after a while, you post your refrigerator as well as. We've posted and the more you post, there's diminishing returns on that stuff and the more you post, less people. And so I'm just looking for a way to have some way to accomplish the same thing, but just not by using.
Uh may I speak?
Yes, you may.
So basically, when I spoke about the planning commission redoing their. Application, it's so that it matches the new rules for what the zoning has, what the planning commission is within the. Short term rental right now, also um. We need to get ourselves back into asking only the questions that we have control over. So the welcome packet is something that if you're. Running a short term rental. That's your welcome packet to your client. That is not something that the planning commission needs to see, because they have no control over what you put in your welcome packet. So just like you said, the checklist for the hot tub, I don't care. They know, and so we have to keep ourselves. Down this narrow path that what's in the zoning resolution is what will be on the application. And what questions could be asked of the applicant. Because we don't want to get too far out of the weeds that we don't have any business DNA.
Right, yeah.
So, so basically, I don't know what questions or what check offs that you would like to see or implement that we have a business over.
So all I'm saying is, for example, uh great point that the person online brought up about uh fire danger. So and you know, but when I say the same same uh you know, after always. You know, like the fire danger once and and after you've seen it for fifteen years and it's been high, after a while you just ignore it. And and I'm just saying that with that with with this types of technology and the things that I'm rolling out right now. Only flash that message when it applies, so I'm not gonna make you read through fire ban, if there's not a fire ban. But if you're arriving during the time of a fire ban, that you're gonna see on that message, you don't get a barcode until you check off, you can see the fire ban.
So that's firstly between you as an S T R owner.
Right, but you're asking me to post, I'm just saying, if you want me, if you're gonna require me to post that information, fire ban information, I would better.
No, we're not gonna make that. No, that's not something that.
But if you run through this, the dozens of citations of things you have to post. And I'm just saying, with the exception of this eight routes, which you need to have all kinds, you can't predict that. Just relying on posting on, as is referenced fifteen times here, is it's kind of obsolete. There's more effective ways to do it, so I'm just asking you to give you some sort of discretion and say, oh, I see how this is more effective than putting another precinct on there to.
Oh, and I agree, so when we ask for the evacuation plan out of the house and out of the yard, that's part of your application packet. That's not only for the planning commission to see uh and the zoning office, that's actually for us. If we have a fire and we have a short term rental, I'm opening up your packet that you gave me. And I'm going to try to help the first responders say, make sure they go left out of this property, not right. So it's not only uh it's not only for the renters, but this is to cover us, because we have a volunteer fire department. And um I only know that that's west because of the mountains, so actually we're, we can't enforce. Things that we don't have control over. Period. So I can't, so if I tell you to put something about a fire ban on the refrigerator, I don't have time to go to forty some. S T Rs and make sure that you put that on there and a check mark, yeah, that's great. I don't have the authority to come after you and say, well, you checked it.
All I'm saying is, give us, give us creative mechanisms whereby we can accomplish the intent and substance of this without saying. Do it in this exact way, which will become more and more obsolete, very kind of this.
May I interject here for a second? I think we're almost talking apples and oranges here between the two of you. I think what he is asking is. Giving the. Current age where everything is going more digital. He is asking for us to look at moving forward, something besides hard copies on. Say the refrigerator to the guests at the S T Rs. Uh and moving to something more of a digital format. Is what I'm hearing you say, is that correct? Not necessarily to your office. Or anything like that, but where we are, what I'm hearing him ask us to look at is. Moving forward to be able to allow the S T R owners to provide some of this information that we're requiring them to give to the renters. In a digital form rather than a hard copy form. Uh Bill, you've been wanting to speak.
Uh I want to point out that cell phone service in County County is spotting that there. So until cell phone service is available to everybody. It should be an option, but not a requirement.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is is the option another.
Don't rely on cell phone service. It does not exist.
I'd like to point out, Mary, I'd like to point out that it doesn't say that this is a paper posting. It says um included in your application and posted in your house rules. People post Facebook, that's not paper, this is not telling you that you have to have a physical piece of paper somewhere.
Right, and I guess, well, then if all we're doing is posting can be done electronically, then.
It doesn't say either way.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, well, I don't, it's by my memory right now. As long as you guys have.
He's seventy-one.
And uh uh you know, I I posted. I think I was. Chairman, it's on my.
And also this adds to your business, if you're posting electronically and those people are not, they give you advantage to sell them, because you do theirs also.
But you are putting a post that's required by the state, this S T R is going to be posted.
You know how so often we get uh leave conferences? And 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 we we both parties agree that emails, devices, maybe a paragraph like that. And the matter of me, in other words, I'm not saying that that you say emails, devices, but but communicating this information electronically meets the requirement. Of posting or returning.
I agree, Charlie, but we don't say, we don't care how you press it, you want it posted, it's posted now, you want it posted electronically, we don't care. It's up to the individual. Who owns the S T Rs.
But here's my answer. When I just heard you might be retiring, if your request says posting means you post it, then.
I hope not, yeah, I hope not, and then uh. And I understand totally, and hopefully before I retire, uh you'll be attending one of these meetings. For the short term rental and there's seven planning commissions that will straighten them out, so.
Planning commission.
They're actually, the planning commission is in charge of the short term rentals and stuff, so uh I have no qualms, these people seven straight.
Can I make one comment?
You may.
As the time has rolled on here, I wonder if we might, as as Jackie says, we're gonna make our application now all in line with all this. Can we put in the application that the owner is responsible to notify the renter of any potential violations? Rather than that renter having to call and find out. What if we just put in there that it's your responsibility. What if we just put in there that it's your responsibility to notify the renter?
And may I speak?
You may.
And it sounds really good, but you guys have to keep in mind that every rule that you make has to have a reaction. And the reaction comes from one person in the zoning office. So you have to, it's like putting conditions on short term rentals, putting conditions on special use permits. You're depending on one person to make sure that over two hundred variances are following the rules. So you can put whatever you want on application. You can put whatever you want in a zoning resolution, but unless you have followed through, it's just a rule. So on putting it on the application that you would want to make sure that everyone contacts and make sure that there's a fire ban, well, who's gonna make sure that that rule's enforced?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that it's just one more layer of, of a responsible STR owner would tell, would tell her tenant that. And no, you can't just unallow them to force it or anything. But, but maybe eighty percent of them will do that.
But we're hoping that we go on good faith here. And we're hoping that what we have is a process in place that if you don't follow the rules, you don't get another, you don't get a renewal. It's just like this. So if we have a fire ban and the sheriff's department says, we were up at this short term rental and they started a fire, then that's when I react. And we take everyone that you're good and that you follow the rules. And right now, our short term rental people, the majority of them are following the rules. And they're good at doing this and they don't want their house to burn up and stuff. We have a volunteer fire department, keep that in mind also. And so we don't have the fire department even come check their houses. So we're telling them that there's a fire ban, but yet their firewood stove is too close to the wall and it causes the house to catch on fire. So you know, there's some trust we gotta have in these short term rental people. And if you don't trust them to follow the rules that's common sense, then why do we have short term rentals? And I would, you know, have some faith in those people. They're doing a business and their property is cleaner and healthier than most other people's property because they want a rental. So that's where I'm at. I'm at this because there is so many layers in my office right now that you continue to add more layers. You're, you've got to stick with the rules that are enforceable and that's why I'm at. But it's up to the planning commission. I won't be here.
I, I agree with Jackie and the other bad spectrum. It's how, this is just one example. How are we gonna determine what else we're planning there and you know, it's just gonna be too much of a burden. So I think I agree with what you say that we uh we've got those requirements and we can, we can depend on the owners of doing the fulfillment of notification.
We tried to create wars now with a camel with ten humps. I mean, it's just crazy. Layer and layer, can't, can't mock to that.
I agree, and that's my opinion, but uh every person coming into Costa County, their county responsibility, we post what fire conditions are, period. And the owner wants to go the extra step and make sure that you can put a quote in your, whether you rent it or not, so you must recycle the ban to be before I rent it if you want to. I mean, it's up to you how, how, how you wanna rent. Everything we do, what's the practical thing and the white thing. If it's published, it could be in the newspaper, everywhere. If a fire danger gets higher, just like it did right before the snow. It went farther than it can go.
Does the zoning office make recommendations as to what is included in the welcome packet?
No. Uh we, I need to discuss that in a planning commission meeting. But you gotta be careful that you're consistent with what you ask. And my welcome packet for my short term rental, I don't have them for one ten, uh is my personal welcome packet. So, and everyone is individual. We used to ask for the welcome packet, but that's none of our business. Uh that's an individual renter. And so uh from now on, you're only gonna be asking for the welcome packet.
So.
If there was a list of recommendations, for example, we recommend you include and then maybe the, the fire ban information.
We do, but that's getting into your business. Welcome packet is individually tailored to the home and to the property. And so uh that's just like another layer. And so we have to be a little careful that we keep our questions of what we're responsible for. So that's how come we are not doing that. And a lot of times, you know, we would get these welcome packets and we would actually make comments about the welcome packets. And it was out of line, so we're gonna stop that.
Bill. Oh, yeah. Uh I might only add a comment that we do make one requirement. That is one of the changes we're making here is under nine, ten, three, four. It says, uh, the good neighbor policy is included in your application and shall be posted in your house. Oh, that's not the, the packet though. Why, excuse me for that. That's in the house rules, not the welcome packet.
So in that reading, when you say it must be posted in the house, that to me says, it's a piece.
Shall be posted in your house rules.
Oh, house rules.
So you, and how, so how do you give them your house rules? I might have cut that sentence short.
Your choice.
Not gonna turn loose at that one, are you? So. Mr. Flower.
I must have twitched or something.
Okay. No, I was just checking with you before. Any other comments or anything on this? Uh I think what I'm hearing is that we probably will not include that at this time. Anything else?
Just, just one thing. If you'd like some STR expertise and background, as you go through that app, I could volunteer my time so that they're not, so it works for some of them and works on both sides.
You're a land tax state chair.
Okay. I do turn. You got another.
Okay, before I adjourn. Okay. Uh Mr. Flower.
Yeah, thank you, sir. I just want to publicly state and maybe remind some folks, today is the last day of our extension director. She's moving on, so if you feel so inclined and wanted to go upstairs and wish her well, certainly would be appropriate.
Okay. Uh this will be on the agenda for the month end meeting for approval as, as well as the resolution stated such. I will adjourn this meeting at eleven twenty AM. Thank you all for being here.